Where's everybody? Hi. Well, Peter supposedly here. He's a non video, he's connecting to audio. Alright. Let's get this.
Are those your trees in the front yard?
Yeah, this is just virtually now, yeah, a few days ago.
They're beautiful.
Yeah. Every year I take this picture, I probably, they don't look all that different year to year, but.
You should show them one after the other and see if it makes a movie.
Right, a movie through the years, front yard through the years. Yeah, hi, Rob. Alright, what else do I need? Treasures report, thank you very much. Hi Christine.
Hello.
Hey, everybody.
Hi Peter.
I don't think John's ever started the meeting earlier than seven thirty. Well, since the meeting started.
You want to start now? We don't have a quorum.
Well, since the meeting started Monday, this is actually, you're actually pretty late, dude.
Oh, right, that's right, that's right, the agenda was.
Monday the sixteenth. And you screwed up the IRS because they are now totally confused when tax day was. The loophole is in.
Yes, tax day was on Tuesday, the fifteenth.
You can, I'll ask you to come in and testify at my trial, thank you.
Right. George, okay. What else do I need here?
Hello.
Hi.
Hello.
I'm looking to be inspired by new recipes.
New recipes for disaster or food?
New recipes, food, food of course. Food, the great escape.
Yep. Well, where are the seventy people interested in the RACIC resolution recommendations? There's one.
They took one look at the agenda and ran away.
Well.
It's that time.
So we're just missing Eva.
Right.
Barbara, oh, there she is. Is Mary?
Yep.
Yep.
Kathy, I have an extra monitor you can have if you want.
What?
So you can actually see.
Oh, yeah, I can see, no, I have one, I just didn't know I could do that.
Yeah. I'm trying to get rid of it. Here she is.
What am I looking for here? See what I have here. We got a few people coming in here.
So John, can you make this meeting end at eight o'clock so we can see the end of the CAPSCAN?
I thought you said you had an extra monitor. Right. Alright, another minute or so. And Dave, okay. Alright, I guess it's. That time has come, so welcome everybody to the April sixteenth meeting of the town council. First item of business is to approve the agenda. If someone will move.
Motion to approve the agenda.
Okay, thank you, Peter, anybody else second please?
One second.
Who was that?
Alright, you should see it on your screen. It was mildly modified from the first posting for when the date is now. For today. I just, you know, I'd claim I put it through to see if anybody ever read the agenda, but I actually just screwed up. And it's otherwise, I think unchanged, one of the appointments has been stripped from administrative matters from the original one. If you're looking at the copy, we're going to get David Stoppak, he is not David Stoppak Boer. And we, I did not get you all the minutes from March. I'm sorry, this is wrong, good. Brilliant. I did not get you the minutes from. For February twenty seventh. And for March twenty fifth. Okay, so I'm trying to. Prepare this there, that. This is the one that we'll be doing, okay, anybody else have any comments or suggestions for the agenda? Alright, then all papers approving the agenda as now shown. And the opposed, agenda's approved. Right, so, starting in at the top, public appearances, do we have any public appearances by anyone on a matter that is not on? The agenda? Okay, if not, we'll move along, I can let Tom into the meeting and. Go on to the treasures report, so I'll let Jean take it from here. If she will.
I will, I don't have a lot of comments that were not on the report itself. And I know we've got a packed agenda, so I don't want to spend a lot of time, but if I'm certainly open to any questions. Revenue is doing well as usual. So much of our revenue is tax based, so we don't have a lot of fluctuations there and. As is the norm, we are down in spending, down versus the budget, which is the norm. So we're well ahead for the year. We're doing quite well in interest thanks to the market. The money that sits at the Sandy Spring Bank is in two different CDs, both at four something percent. And they are. Both fifteen and seventeen month long CDs, from what I understand, the interest rate market will be dropping in the coming year. So I went for longer CDs to keep that four percent there. And that, that's the high point really that I think needs explaining out of revenue. With the expenses, there's, there's certainly not. A lot that needs explaining other than what's in the notes, we have had in the last week, as most people know, some tree work had to be done. So I expect by year end, the tree removal will be more over budget than was put in the. Year end projection, but there are other categories within that, that department, so. I think we'll be good at the, at the bottom line. So that is the highlights of what I would.
Any questions for Jean?
Yeah, I, you know, I think we want to save more time for other topics, so I'm not going to belabor this.
Okay, any, any questions?
No.
That case need a motion to accept the April.
March.
Well, March. Yeah, treasures report.
So moved Barbara.
Okay.
Second.
Was that Mary?
I think, I'll beat you, Mary, now you got.
Okay, it's Rob. You got a timer there?
Yeah, no, he just, you know. So, okay, all in favor? Rich hands, okay, any post, alright, the treasures report is accepted. So, we go on to. The, my report. I didn't have any specific kudos, probably because I just didn't know anything. Any, anybody's major contributions, if anybody else has anybody thing they want to.
Yeah, I have, I have one author out there and it's not specific, but I just want to say that Steve Worts. Is under the radar because he does, you know, guide RJ, but, but, but on his own time, he is help. I know putting up the nets at the basketball courts is the most recent thing, but there's been a lot of maintenance type things that he's given us advice on, or he's helped. Throughout the year, and I just want to, you know, recognize him, or John, have you kudo him? For what he's done, his contributions to the town, as Steve works, yeah.
Okay, now, yeah, it's, it's a regular, regular, Steve has really. Ever since he retired from, you know, as being a town employee, he is probably. Probably, he, he's not doing the routine stuff, but he is stepping up for all sorts of smaller and even a few more larger. Problems and then things that have come up, so we can't, you know, you can't say it often enough when you have someone like that, you know, it's, he's, he's still a great asset to the town.
And we can't take him for granted, is I guess what you're saying.
Yes, true, so. Right. Okay, then. Let me continue with the report, the first, next item is the Gaithersburg Old Town Shared Use Path. As everyone knows, they have been engaged in planning a shared use path from Old Town up to Washington Grove. Where they have engaged us in discussing their plans and most recently, we got an update from Mark Kyle, who is the planner. Involved in that project, they are applied or have just applied for a grant from. SHA, Maryland Department of Transportation. To continue planning and engineering studies on the project, as you know, the, the importance of this to Washington Grove. Is that they are including in the project, they're not stopping at the Gaithersburg boundary, they are including the small segment. The small, but very important segment from the Commercial Corner to Brown Street. So I provided them a letter of support. And Montgomery County is cooperating as well because Montgomery County is responsible for the intersection. So hopefully they'll get that, those funds and we'll be moving along. On, on that, the bath, shared use path on that side. Alright, whole bunch of announcements. Which seem to be appropriate here, the annual lake cleanup scheduled for Saturday, April twentieth, there's a rain date. It's going to be again focused on the West Woods, all this, this is sponsored by the Woods Committee. No, the Lake Committee is sponsoring the lake, you know, the Woods Committee is sponsoring the spring woods. Cleanup, which is at the West Woods, the lake hasn't changed, it's still in the West Woods also. And the, the Woods Committee's spring cleanup is on the twenty seventh, it also is roughly around Arbor Day, I think Arbor Day is the twenty fourth or the, I mean, the twenty sixth or fifth. So dovetail with that, recognizing the importance of trees. There, Dog Park Cleanup, the Dog Park Committee's scheduled cleanup for, also for Saturday, April twenty seventh, so. There will be a bunch of people in the West Woods, hopefully a lot of, a lot of us will be there. RACIC and the Emery Grove Community are co-sponsoring the, I think it's the first of several. Sessions, the joint community event, the first one will be in person in Emery Grove. On the twenty first, where participants will, the, the intention is that participants will share stories. From their experiences over in the past and maybe current, of course, on racial issues. And the idea of course is to foster continuing cooperation and understanding and the subsequent event. I don't have those dates, but the next one will be here in Washington Grove at the Women's Club, I believe.
John, they're on the website, on the homepage.
Yeah, of course, all these will be in the bulletin.
And there'll be posters up soon, and, and I just want to clarify though, and I'm sorry to interrupt, but. The audience will not be telling stories, but they will be listening and doing written comments and subsequent sessions, there'll be more audience participation.
Thank you. Right, I'm only announcing the things in April, those other things. Okay, and so three of our committees, the forestry and munification sustainability and the Woods Committees. Have, have, are sponsoring a presentation by Master Gardener Janet Hostetler. Hope the name is right, it's been spelled about three different ways. Various communications. The title is there, using locally native plants to solve common landscape challenges in Washington Grove. I'm sure the deer will be present at this discussion. Because they're always interested to know what so-called deer-proof landings are coming along. So also on that day, and not listed here, and remind, I had just, I can't announce everything, but Peggy is throwing it into the chat, Peggy Boer. That there will be a meatless potluck on the twenty eighth, starting at six PM. The first one of these was last year. It apparently was a great success, and so they're hoping to continue that and get more participation. With that, the, I guess the body, the, the relationship to sustainability is that. Meat production is. Counts for quite a bit of the. Methane gases and, 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 and other things that are contributing to our. Our effects on the climate and, and, and other aspects of.
And water too, it takes, it takes, it takes like a hundred gallons of water or something to make one hamburger patty.
Yeah, so when they say drink more water, they don't mean eat a hamburger. Right, okay, that's the end of my report, everything else is part of the agenda, pretty much. Okay. So we come on to administrative matters. And at the top of that is, of course, the annual meeting is, is on May eleventh. And will be the next meeting that we've scheduled, or the town. In the, in the last, ever since COVID, with that meeting has been conducted virtually. So the council needs to, once again, weigh in and decide, are we going to do it again virtually or? Go back to the town hall, I will point, I will comment that. Given the state of our technology capabilities, having a hybrid meeting for the town meeting. Really isn't feasible, we, we would need to, we need to practice that with the town council before we would. Extend that to, I would think, I think the, the town meeting or any other meeting, so. I'd like to take a hybrid meeting off the table, it's either in person or virtual, you may have a different opinion, so. What does everybody think?
I like, I would like an in-person meeting.
I would also like an in-person meeting. I think, I think especially if we continue to meet as a town council on Zoom, which. I would support, I think it's nice once a year to meet face to face.
Yeah, I agree.
The, the only thing with that is there are still some people that are concerned about being in larger groups, and if you can't do hybrid, then that will definitely eliminate people who. You know, who would otherwise like to be there.
Yeah, we, we should have done a, made a request in the bulletin or maybe by Grove Alert. To hear from people who would attend. Who wouldn't attend a town, a town meeting in person, but would virtually. Because I know, Mary, you know, I have a feeling you're right, but how many that is, and you know, how many? Of the actual participants virtually are in that, have that, you know. Restriction.
In, in, in person events have been pretty well attended, I guess, or increasing attendance.
Yeah.
With the movie, so, yeah.
Yeah. Holiday show, there were a lot of people a few months ago. John, do we have any numbers on how many people attended the past couple years of? Zoom town halls versus the last couple in-person town halls? I, I do get the sense, my, my preference is to kind of restore normality and, and have in-person, but I do get the sense that. It seemed like more people may have attended town, the Zoom town halls. And, and, you know, I, I think that's an important consideration if we.
I think that's important, but our, our town, you know, our history, we're a community, and, you know, I, I spent, I spent the last four years of my job teaching people over Zoom. And it is, you know, it isolates people, I mean, it's great, it's a great tool, it got us through COVID, but I like what you said about getting back to normal. And I think that there's a real sense of the community when we all get together, which Zoom doesn't do. And, you know, all of our, my experience has been all of our events that we've had, like the one fiftieth even, which is a while ago, a year ago. They're all very well attended, so, I mean, I would really like to see this in person again, but. You know, it's up to you guys.
I mean, regarding attendance, just responding to Rob's question, we, we have had. Significantly more than a quorum every year. And if everyone can remember that far back, there have been years where we've had to. Beat the bushes, not, not recently, that's unfair to, you know, beat the bushes in order to make sure that fifty, fifty voting residents were. Present, I don't necessarily expect that would happen, but if it does, we'll have, we'll be. Challenged. So. You know what, we can, I mean, if you really want to get a, the pulse of the town. I can issue a Grove Alert. And we can, we can. And we can uh, we can um um get a response. I I have no doubt we can either just have people email and, you know, we we wouldn't get that many. I mean, you got a hundred emails. It's easy to it's easy to uh co- uh, you know, um correlate all all of those. Or Christine or whoever is an ace at these uh at these um polls, uh, you know, we can
Oh, survey, like Survey Monkey?
Survey Monkey that would
Yeah.
Take care of the 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 thing. We could do all of that um in time for the final announcement. Which uh the the notice has to be given. I've forgotten.
Yeah, John.
Ten days.
Um, I I think that even if COVID had never happened, or, you know, even if we're talking like five years from now, you're always gonna have somebody who says either, you know, I'm immunocompromised or there's some other reason I cannot attend the meeting in person. I mean, it's, this seems to me to be an ongoing issue that if if uh let's say we do a poll and we find out that there are five people who say they'd like to attend, but they're not going to attend at the meetings in person.
Right.
Uh what kind of accommodation do we give that? And that is true now, and it's true any year in the future, you know, um. And there might have been people before i- in in town meetings before COVID who felt like they didn't want to come because they didn't want to expose themselves to all the people in the room. To me, this this is not a COVID-specific issue.
So the best, so of course, the general solution is to find a way, you know, or 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 set up uh the um our technology to have a hybrid meeting. A hybrid meaning, meaning, you know, the requirements are that anybody participating virtually would have to be able to uh hear everything that is said and uh, you know, and who's speaking and have an opportunity to contribute um as as well. And, you know, it, this isn't really rocket science. It's
No, it's not. I mean, what what have we, what have we done? We've been talking about this for a long time.
I know.
Everybody, everybody's able to do it except us. Why don't we just bring somebody in and get it done?
Well, okay, and on that score, the Maryland uh uh the Montgomery Municipal Cable has uh has helped several towns set up hybrid meetings, um Kensington, Garrett Park, and somebody else, they record their meetings. They're available by YouTube. Um they are hybrid meetings. They um have good, have experience and they could, they've offered to help set it up. So if we were to commit to do that, and once again, I would, I would do it by starting with the town council to get the, get, you know, we got it, we can, we can, we can work it out with the council meetings, um which means the council would have to go back to in-person uh and and everybody else can come or use the hybrid system. So so maybe we should uh, you know, commit to doing that and maybe set up, uh, you know, try and get our act together for the next town meeting. And this one, we will do one or the other. Um and I guess um I mean, I think that's where we are. So maybe, do we need to have a vote or do we have a consensus? So I've heard Peter, Rob, uh and Christine have have spoken out that they feel um they'd like to go and do it in person. Um um Mary has, yeah, and well, so we need to hear from Mary, Eva, and Barbara.
Yeah, I just, I don't have a real strong opinion because I never attended a town meeting in person. So I don't have anything, you know, uh all my experience has been with Zoom meetings. So I don't have anything to compare it to. Um, you know, I do like that I can wear my pajama pants for Zoom meetings, but that's not enough of a reason to keep it on Zoom. So I I will go with whatever the majority wants to do.
Y- yeah, this is Barbara. I mean, I I I see Peter's point about, you know, meeting in person, but I I do worry about excluding people and some people who might not feel comfortable really speaking up and say, well, have the meeting on Zoom because of me, because, you know, people don't like to do that. So I feel it's more inclusive to keep it on Zoom. So that would be my preference.
And although it's an ongoing issue, I agree with you, Christine. I think it's much more, people are much more aware after COVID about what the dangers are of being in large, um, you know, large meetings, what they would not have thought of before. Not necessarily being scared of COVID, but just the other stuff.
But it's not all, it's not access just because of COVID. There are other reasons people don't come, too.
Right, exactly.
And other infectious disease.
Well, not even infection.
Yeah, I mean, there there is like child care issues, things like, you know.
No, no, I mean, health issues.
Oh.
Mobility or whatever, or being, you know, having the stamina. Um and so until it can be hybrid, I'm sorry to speak that term, but I'm just glad that you're having this discussion about access. Because so until it can be hybrid, it seems like more people have access via this.
Right, um. Yeah, I see Jean has slipped into the chat, uh which I I don't recommend as a way of making statements to to this meeting, but that um that uh because the meeting is in the evening and now in the, in the past, it has gone a lo- a long time. People are, at least when you're, it's virtual, you have um the ability to to uh leave, which may not be a positive thing. But we always wait to vote on the tax rate till the end, and we do need to have a quorum at that time. So, you know, while people can leave, um we need to be sure there's, there remains the quorum um when votes are taken.
John, um my point was mostly that if it's in person and it's going late, people would be more apt to leave early than they would if it was virtual. That that was
Don't actually think that happens. Um in my, uh, well, at least I haven't noticed uh an ex of this. But, I mean, you may be right, some people, but some people may come knowing they can leave. You see, it's a uh, yeah, it's um, whereas uh you could do the eh, the same thing that happened virtually. Oh, I'll I'll listen in and when I, you know, when I get tired and I'll I'll just tune out. Okay, I we, as always, we've beaten this to death. I'm sorry I didn't start this a month ago. We might have been able to uh cobble together um something that might uh at least um, you know, make possible some attendance uh virtually. Um unless somebody else has a comment, let's move to a vote, which I have to take a vote on this. Um so uh let's, let's vote on whether or not to hold the town meeting, annual town meeting in person this year. You're voting on in-person. In favor is in-person, opposed is virtual, because that's the option. All right, uh all in favor of holding the meeting this year in person? I see three. Uh are those opposed to holding it in person, therefore in favor of virtual? I see three. Oh, boy. Okay, so that means I get to vote. To break this. Yeah, um, you know, I I think I'm gonna have to go with virtual. Um because we need to, uh I think we need to just, you know, start early for next year and and once again, prepare and do it in person. I think I said the same thing last year. We didn't do it. Um and here we are again. But I I will say, I think the virtual town meetings, notwithstanding the loss of the community aspect, computers a hundred percent, and Rob's a hundred percent correct, that we've, we've, we've lost that. But I think the participation has been substantial. Um, everybody seems to um, you know, uh show up uh because it is partly because it's convenient. And um I'm sure that will happen again this year. Uh so I'm gonna break the tie in favor of virtual once again. But um I I don't know who to throw this to, and maybe it's me. Um I will try and uh what what I'm going to do with the new council, this is the old council, the new council, is we'll uh we'll commit to 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 doing at least one or more council meetings hybrid um in order to work out any kinks in um in the technology to make that possible. All right, um so uh that was a very good discussion and, you know, it's a tough thing to decide on. All right, so now we're on to review the procedures for the town election. When we have Nick uh Suzak here, who is the spokesperson, chairman of the Board of Supervisors of Elections. Um so Nick, if you you're welcome, uh I'd like you to just uh state, you know, if there are any any new wrinkles, remind everybody of what the drill is for the election. And you have to unmute. You there?
I don't see you. Oh, there he is.
Yeah, he's there. He's just
Yeah.
If you're trying to speak, Nick, you're muted. And we can't see you. All right, tell you what, we'll, we'll come back to Nick. Um I'll, I'll, I'll ping him while we're, move through the rest of these items. Okay, um. All right, the next item um is um I'd like to schedule the May, I mean, I can schedule it, but uh five of you will, will, well, not five of you, four of you will be back um after the town, after the election. I'd like to schedule the town meeting, uh town meeting, the a a May council meeting. And um I'm looking at the calendar, so the uh, of course, the town meeting is on the eleventh. Part of the reason I want to do it tonight is because we need to announce the meeting, and if it's going to be on the thirteenth, which is the Monday following the, I, we can't do it on the thirteenth. I have to get sworn in. Um and that would leave me one day to get sworn.
What makes you think you're gonna get elected?
Uh.
Let's wait.
Whoever is elected has to get sworn in.
You're taking all the dra- drama out of this. Nobody's gonna show up now. Have to tell me.
Okay, point taken. Whoever is elected will have to get sworn in. Uh so I'm gonna propose the twentieth, Monday, the twentieth. Um which is uh the Monday, the second Monday following the the town meeting. Any objections? All right, done. So we'll, we'll, we are scheduling um a town council meeting for May twentieth. Um as as most of you know, that is uh, we all, we do the organization of the of the town council. But in recent years, we have, uh, well, two things. We do the organization of the um of the, of the, of the council for the, for the new year, and we also have to pass the ordinance, which will be introduced further on in tonight's meeting, the ordinance adopting our tax rates which is required by Maryland law. So that's why we have to have this meeting um for those things and other business, um which I can already tell you will likely uh will will certainly include any, any, uh hopefully will include. Uh might have to wait till the June meeting, um road repair um plans, finalizing road repair plans um prior to the end of the fiscal year. Okay, so May twentieth. Um, all right, next administrative matter, we um put out our leaf uh um collection. Kind uh RFP and um got se- uh two responses. So um we want to award a contract tonight. And um I I summarized that uh the the two bids we received. Um I'm happy to say we got two bids and uh I've just summarized them here. We um we RJ uh again bid and um their bid was uh eighteen thousand five fifty. And Green Earth came back again. They've been our leaf collectors for um quite a few years now. At sixteen seven forty. So um there are no wrinkles to this. Uh, you know, the the contracts pretty well um pretty, pretty much uh the same as it, the the, we will be pretty much the same as it's been. Um it is renewable for um four additional years. Um so um there you have it. Any, any discussion of these bids or questions?
No, I I would just say that working with RJ is a delight and they do a great job. But Green Earth has been with us, as you said, for quite a while. And I think they do a great job and all the, all their workers are very polite. Um and I I feel, I personally feel a sense of loyalty um to what they've done over the years, to my experience.
Okay, anybody else have a comment?
I agree.
Right.
Right. So, John, we're not bound to take the lowest bid.
No.
I assume. We can, we can take, for example, you know, best value for the town.
That's correct.
However we define that.
Yes. We, we usually have uh in our RFPs that caveat that, you know, there are, there are intangible or un-un uh uh non-specific reasons. There might be a preference. We'd have to be justified. I would would never recommend taking a um higher bid um unless there was some um, some uh defensible reason to to do so. And we have done that, uh fairly recently. We did it, uh, I think. I'm trying to remember what sense that was. But maybe it was the refuse collection, the previous contract, not the current one, the one we just awarded. Um we we had that. I will say that Green Earth, um Kathy can uh, you know, Kathy get the, here, hears the complaints uh about our you know, service personnel like this, and
And they're, they're less money this time.
Well, they're less money. I was just gonna I want to point out Peter's, Peter's pretty spot on, and what what supports that is, I know not this year, but last year, there were issues, uh there were some um uh residents who felt that they, the the leaf collection was leaving very, you know, t- too much leaves yeah, from from Windrow Pickup. And we um, we discussed that with Green Earth and they um they uh improved their procedures, and I don't know of any complaints from last fall uh of that kind. So uh that speaks to them being responsive and, you know, basically doing a a good job around town. Okay, we don't need to belabor this. Uh it's been proposed we accept the low bid. All in favor? Any opposed? All right, so we've awarded a contract to Green Earth.
John, this is a quick question. Would you want the budget adjusted accordingly?
Yes.
Okay. That was seven sixteen seven fifty?
Oh, yeah, I just
Yeah. Thank you.
In seven forty.
Seven sixteen seven forty. Got it.
Uh, yeah, I truncated the cents off of that.
That's fine.
Now, um, all righty, um. Okay, so um the next item on administrative matters, um there were, was a suggestion made. Well, first of all, there was an incident or two that that rose to the level of um of some discussion among the uh people in the um uh who were aware of it, uh about the, about um tennis court. Um the dogs on the tennis court, I think this particular one was, or maybe it was roller of uh skateboarding um on the uh tennis, on the, on the hard surface tennis court. And so um as these things, you know, the 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 idea that um uh this activity is prohibited and that this can damage the tennis courts. Uh and um we um have posted that uh things are prohibited. Um the idea is, well, maybe, once again, maybe we should lock the tennis courts um to prevent just, just advantageous, you know, use for things that uh shouldn't be done. All right, so um um it's Mer- oh, this is some, so Mer- Meredith was part of this discussion. She's here, but I don't necessarily, and we don't necessarily need her to contribute. There was, uh I would like to hear from a few of the council. There was, I would like to hear from a few of the council, their thoughts. Is Linda here? I know she, she just sent out her opinion to, hopefully the whole council, but maybe not. I can, I can provide hers if she's not here. Yeah, I think she's in mourning. Linda may be in mourning over her car.
So are, are the tennis courts, they're open to the public, right? So locking them, then make them exclusive. No, they're not. They're only for, they're only for town. I thought it was only the clay courts. They're both, they're all for town. Oh, okay.
The clay ones are, are the, are the, Meredith, the hard ones is, that's, that doesn't say, it doesn't, that's just, the hard ones, that's just, the clay courts say town residents only. I don't think, I'm not sure, that sign I think doesn't say, doesn't prohibit out of towners.
Yeah, the courts are for town people.
But the signage, we're asking, what does the signage say?
I think it does. I think it does.
Not on the tennis courts, I don't think. I mean, it says it on the, on the clay courts.
Clay courts.
But the signs on the tennis courts say close the gate or something.
It has a list of no skateboarding, no dogs. It has a list of all the things you shouldn't do on there.
No garden.
My, my only point being if it's not just for town residents, then we can't be locking it up because how would other people get in? But if it's only for town residents.
Yeah, town residents. It's always been town residents.
I mean, I'll, so I'll just put in a couple of thoughts. I, I'm conflicted about this. But I did, I did see a town resident with their dog in the tennis courts. So locking it and every, all residents have the, the combination is not necessarily going to stop. I mean, I will admit that I once took my kids on there with their scooters before I realized that wasn't allowed because I just didn't read the sign. So the problem is people don't read signs and town residents do things they're not supposed to. So I, I think there's not really going to be a perfect solution either way. That, so, yeah, so that's, so I'm kind of conflicted about it because I know the community garden members would perhaps like to see it locked because now the garden is there too. And it might prevent people from messing with the garden. But again, town residents can do things, you know, it's not just like, oh, like insiders are bringing their dogs on the tennis courts. Like, I, I don't, I don't think that, you know, I think I think maybe the thing to do is to just make people more, make people in town more aware that the tennis courts are really only for tennis. Please don't bring your dogs on. Please don't bring your kids' scooters and bikes on. And, you know, maybe we can talk about other signage. But it, it might just be more of like, we need to again, like people don't always read signs. I think the problem with blocking it is that then people are going to constantly be like, what's the combination? And there's going to be, you know, and then we're, it's, but we could try that and see, I, you know, I, I don't know. I know there's, there's some feeling that more signage is, it looks unwelcoming, but also locking something also looks unwelcoming. So, yeah, I just, I feel like really there's no good solution here. So.
I, I, I have a statement and then I want to let Georgette say something because she has, has offered a point of view, which I'd like her to express as well. But first of all, this is one of those situations where, you know, you have a couple of incidents which you, we don't like. Just, just this week, we had trash cans left out behind the commercial corner, a new pickup place, a whole new, new trash pickup. And, and, you know, people are up in arms over that. Well, the fact is that that's a new service and it's a hiccup. If that was happening regularly, it would be something else. Incidents on the tennis court don't happen regularly. So far, I'm not aware, no doubt there have been, but I haven't, I'm not aware of any recent ones where there's been damage due to inappropriate use of the tennis courts. So taking action to prevent a hypothetical issue is always problematic, in my opinion. Secondly, and this is why I want Georgette to speak up. Locking the court, well, no, before the, secondly, it's a, it's a, it's a nightmare. Not a nightmare. It's like the lake. The combinations be changed all the time and management ish. Management of this is, can become a burden, smaller or larger, as the case may be. But there's another and probably maybe the most important reason, Georgia, why don't you address that? I know you know what I'm talking about, if you will. Yeah.
Yeah. Okay, so I did talk to Meredith about this and she told me about a couple of incidents that she had experienced. One with people who had their dog inside of the tennis court and some kids with skateboards. And I think particularly with the, the people with the dog, she spoke to them and they basically said, well, it's for tennis, but what's the problem? My dog can come in here too. And she said, no, and they didn't really believe her. So I just thought that a sign that said specifically what we don't want on the courts, dogs, skateboards, rollerblading, whatever, would be a better solution than a lock. Because here, the Gateway Committee has been working for several years now to make Washington Grove seem more welcoming. And I don't find locks on the tennis courts very welcoming. I, I think, you know, a reasonable sign that if you went to someone at the tennis court and said, see, there's a sign right here that says you're not supposed to have dogs in here. Could you please take your dog back out? Would be better than trying to lock it. So that's.
Georgette, there is, there is a sign on the, you're, you're really talking about the hard surface is the one.
Yeah.
There's, there's a sign, the sign is there. It says no skateboard. It lists no skateboards, no dogs. It specifically says that. It's been there forever. Yeah.
So when, when Meredith said to these people, the sign says no dogs, and they said, no, that doesn't apply to us. Okay, I, I did not, I did not have the impression that there was actually a sign there that she could cite. And they were still saying basically, tough, we don't care. But at that point, honestly, I'd be, I'd be going back to the other side of the fence and saying, well, I'm calling nine one one now for the Montgomery County Police and hope that that would be motivational. I, I still don't think locks are a great idea.
So, so this is Barbara. Can I ask a very naive question? I get, you know, you don't want skateboards and dogs, but do they do any real damage? I mean, on the clay court, I could see that they would damage that. But on the other court, it's, as I understand it, it's blacktop, right? So is there any damage done with a dog or?
Picking up dog poop is.
No, 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 but we know, but we already have a law against leaving your dog's poop. And we know people don't follow that law. But I mean, so I guess I'm trying to find, like, think in my mind, like, how big is this problem? You know, and is, you know, a dog walking across the tennis courts once in a while really going to harm the tennis courts? And if not, then I'm not as concerned about it. I, I don't know.
Well, Linda, Linda would tell you that any, on any, like, you know, John, and John knows this. Any tennis, you know, good tennis surface, and we just spent a lot of money resurfacing ours, you are required to wear tennis shoes, not running shoes, not boots. Because the surface gets damaged, dog nails, skateboard wheels. Anything like that does damage the surface of the tennis courts. And that's why if you go into almost any community that has tennis courts, they're usually locked. And I'm not advocating locking it, but I just have, since you brought it, since this came up. I just, I had a situation six months ago where there was some teenagers skateboarding on the tennis courts. And I went in nicely and asked them to stop their skateboarding. Because as it said on the sign, I pointed it out, it's not allowed. And then an altercation, the teenagers. So then they started, you know, sassing and blah, 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 blah. And then about their buddies, there was about 12 of them were playing basketball. And they all come running over into the court surrounding me. And, you know, it's like, you know, what, you know, you, you can imagine what's going on. I called the mayor to get advice and I was told to call the police. And I kind of walked away and thought about it and I was very upset. And, you know, and so I was told, John, this comes down to enforcement. When things happen within the courts, you know, you always have to call the police, call the police, call the police. You know, it's, it's, you know, this is, this is, we talk about enforcement at the houses, this comes up a lot. And this is part of, I guess, being a small town. And, you know, considering all the other things that we're dealing with, what we do here isn't, you know, I kind of agree that these things do happen once in a while. I think that we have to use, just like, you know, keep our calm. And if it's not doing too much damage, be nice and just ask the people not to do it. And I don't not want to see more signs. I'll say that. I do not want to see, because they're not welcoming, as Georgette said.
I actually like the idea of having signs that are in the right place, meaning on the doors or gates, whatever you call them, to the courts. Then they shouldn't be like in the middle of the court at knee level. I don't know where they are now, so, but they need to be where people cannot say, I didn't see the sign. Also, the sign should include the word please. Please don't do these things. And thirdly, it should include the police non-emergency number so that people can make the connections in their minds like, okay, if I do skateboard here and somebody sees me, they're going to see that police non-emergency number and call that number. So I think if you have signs that say all the necessary things and are polite and have that number, that that should take care of the issue.
So we should just look at the sign that's there and it's, it's, it's fading anyway. It could be re, it could be redone. And we, and that would, and the, the signs at the clay courts are, they're low, like you say, it's, it's very low. You don't, you can't really, they don't stick out. So we could really look at, you know, basically getting, we need four signs, basically.
Yeah, because there's, there's no sign in the, the gate that's near the road. All it says is close the gate. There are no instructions on that one.
Yeah, there is.
If it is there, I don't see it. So you need a better sign.
Yeah.
I, I'm in agreement that, that a tasteful, visible, not in mini print sign with, with cogent information, you don't need to write a volume is, is, is the, the, the best way to approach this for now. If there were routine, you know, egregious violations of, of these, these prohibitions, that would be something else to deal with. But, you know, the point is taken that, you know, maybe we're not making it clear enough what, what, what's not, what should not happen on these courts. And we can certainly improve that. If it's a resident, by the way, one of the approaches would be to say, look, we currently prohibit do, you know, use for this reason. If you would like to see that change, please go to the council. I mean, you have.
That's what public appearances are for.
Exactly. So, you know, if you're a resident, you, you know, just flouting the town rules is, you know, you're not taking advantage of your, your right to object. So, but if it's a resident, we have a difference.
I'll volunteer if it gets the signs made and maybe two other council people would be interested in working on the Worthy. Who would that be? Mary? And how about one other person? And Christine, there we go, John. We're all set.
I would also recommend too that somebody type up something for, to go out on the listserv and the bulletin. Because, I mean, it may be like we're talking about residents coming in, they just don't know, like, you know, Barbara was like, well, you know, is this really a problem? Like, they may just not know why it's a problem and why they shouldn't do it. So, you know, just friendly reminder, don't bring your dogs and skateboards, blah, blah. Here's why. So that, you know, people, some people might read their email more than they'd read a sign. I don't know. You could get a few more people that way.
Okay. All right, thank you. I'd like to move along. Nick, Nick, Nick is here. He can unmute and, and provide a, you know, summary of how the election will be handled this year. Nick?
And then my apologies for being technologically deficient. I didn't realize that I had to acknowledge the recording to unmute and start the video. I was in fact here, struggling with the keyboard. We're prepared. The, the Board of Election Supervisors is a veteran group. We've been doing it for a while now and instituted the first year of COVID a procedure to get people ballots when, I believe the first year we did no in-person voting, maybe for two years. And then we started to do in-person voting, but left a policy in place for absentee ballots that a lot, that was taken advantage of more heavily than previously. I see, I like to think that it's just another way of encouraging participation because there are people who aren't available that always people who are out of town are not available to vote in person. In addition to the people who might still be hesitant to do so for health reasons. So we're doing what we've done the last several years. We're having in-person voting for the seven o'clock, which is what's in the charter. We'll get, if, if if the pattern holds, we'll get more votes that way than we will through the absentee process. But the absentee process is the same. It's very straightforward. It, it requires a couple of steps, but there haven't really been, I haven't heard objections from people. It requires them to fill out a request for a ballot which is available on the website. And having spoken to Kathy today, I know she'll have, will have some copies of the requests available in the office as well. And she's in the process of producing the ballot. And I have a couple of requests for ballots already. What we do is have a series of envelopes. I, I won't bother to illustrate it, but anyone can get a request for a ballot from Kathy or printed from the website where Christine has posted it in a couple of places. And get that to the office, either through the US mail or in person. And we will turn it around within 24 hours or so and get them a ballot through the mail. And then we have a series of envelopes that allow us to keep the ballot anonymous and still have a signature attached to it long enough to to check it against the voting roll to make sure that it's a valid ballot. It's something that we've done for a number of years now and we haven't had any problems. And I anticipated going the way it's gone again this year. So if there are any questions, I think everybody's familiar with what we've been doing.
Thank you, Nick. Yeah, I think the elections have gone very smoothly. They've cut it down. Good procedure. So we're in good hands and appreciation to the Board of Supervisors of Elections who indeed have been consistent, some consistent individuals. Who are we talking about? Margot and who else?
David and Mary Plankton, the observer. She said, it's an easy one because you really only have to, you get to seem as if you're pitching in, but you're only pitching in for a day a year. So, so that's why they've, everybody's been happy to stay in their position for a long time.
Well, nevertheless, it's, it's appreciated, you know, greatly by, by all of the town and certainly by me and the council. Okay, thanks. Alrighty, so next item on the administrative matters are some appointments to the Historic Preservation Commission. The first one are two reappointments. Bob Boer's term ends at the, in June and I am proposing to reappoint Bob for another three-year term ending May in, in, in. For another three-year term ending uh May in in in. Um May thirty-first um. Two thousand twenty-six. I throw out any any comments on that. Bob, of course, has been the chairman. Pretty much since the inception of the HPC, so that we're now talking almost, if not, maybe more than twenty years. I personally, I was mayor back then. I had a ten-year gap. I remember that. Yeah, but that, the, you know, I I I I think this is the right time. Because he's been chairman. And by the way, the next reappointment is Dave Stopak. He's been on practically as long. The HPC was um established in connection with our efforts to. Uh deflect the the high-density along Ridge Road and in the in the field and elsewhere. And um. For those of you who were there, you know, convincing the town to adopt a another. Regular commission um is not uh is not something you go into lightly. So the um the commission hour was established with no uh no actual uh. Power to enforce historic preservation in any way whatsoever. But we believed that um. Um with historic preservation being such an of such great importance and part of the the town's character. That um even a body that that could be persuasive to residents and advocate. For historic preservation would be of value. And it's been basically Bob and the early members and the continuing members of the of the commission have, who have created. Um a a a really significant credibility for uh the HPC. Um you know, there are periods where, you know, their uh their recommendations, their participation in the process. Was criticized or, you know, frustrating because it adds another layer. But but the vast majority of of people have been. Recipients of the HPC's activities have been very impressed and uh. I I believe felt on their individual projects, their individual renovations. Um up to the, you know, uh the comprehensive plan revisions. So this is all the credit of 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 all the HPC commissioners, but Bob. Boer has been leading the charge. And um you can't say enough about how uh how important he has been. So his willingness to continue in this role is 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 um very good for the town. Yeah. Okay, if there are no comments, let's move to a vote. Uh from the council supporting my reappointment of Bob. All in favor? Any opposed? I won't let anybody be opposed. All right, the second one is Dave Stopak. His term also is up in the same same way. Dave's been on the HPC quite a while. Um he's, you know, again, made huge contributions, great consistency. He's been active um um ever since we had the uh the the challenge of uh development. So um. Any 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 comments from the council on that reappointment? If not, all in favor of reappointment of David? Any opposed? Okay. All right, and now we have a very pleased to uh uh propose uh an alternate HPC commissioner appointment. To Samantha Suzik. Um who is a pretty new resident of uh Washington Grove. Um she uh is a uh is a um. You know, now a member of the Suzik family. I provided a brief bio uh that she provided to everyone, if you took a look at that. Um and she has uh been at, been involved in some of the HPC activity and has spoken extensively with Bob. And as you know, the alternate position is 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 um. In addition to being a time commitment to actually pay attention and and participate, it's not a voting position unless. Unless uh one of the commissioners isn't present, in which I believe uh they are then allowed to vote. To fill out, to fill out the five members. So I uh, you know, this is a, you know, I I have to say this to this group. I mean, you know. This is a a a new blood, not only new blood potentially, but a young, young, younger generation. And getting anybody uh uh interested and involved is a huge plus for the town, so. Okay, any comments on um this appointment? All right, all in favor pointing Samantha Suzik? Uh no opposed? Thanks. Alrighty, um that's the end of the administrative business and takes us. To uh a discussion of the remaining RACIC recommendations. Having uh having uh the uh already acted on the um. The um renaming of MacArthur Hall. I uh I put into the um into the agenda the four remaining. Um remaining recommendations. The council agreed to uh address each one individually. And so here we are. And in the order, in the in in order of the way they're listed, and I didn't list them in any particular order, well, I did sort of. Um the first one was uh the recommendation to collaborate with neighboring communities regarding the shared use path. So um. Anyone who wishes to.
Yeah. I'll um, I I'm what?
Wait a second, wait a second, wait a second. Um doesn't, is, I I I maybe I'm wrong, but don't the council members um get to speak first?
Absolutely.
For saying, I I apologize.
Oh, no, I I I I was about to say the same thing. I think, you know. Um if you want to preempt Paula's uh. Paula's um.
Presentation.
Explanation as to why and what this is about.
Just, okay, so um.
I I think, but I think Peter's right. I think we've already had some comments in past meetings uh about this. And perhaps uh perhaps we can get to the gist of it.
Yeah, I'm like a little bit confused and disappointed. And it's probably my fault, but at the last, at the meeting where I proposed rejecting all the callers. Uh we had the discussion, Rob saved saved this the day. And I was under the impression that um these these four suggestions that we're going to talk about tonight. We don't really understand how they're going to be carried out. And what the involvement of the council is in that, and that we would have been given that information before this meeting tonight. I mean, that's just, that's, that was my, and I've looked, I've tried to, I've tried to see if I missed something, and I don't know if I have. And so I thought, I think it would have been more advantageous to RACIC if we had a little bit of time. To um see what the strategy is for the implementation of these four suggestions. That's all.
I asked for direction.
I know you're dying to talk, Paula, but maybe uh somebody else wants to contradict me first.
So I, maybe I I remember us saying we would discuss them. I don't know that we were waiting on RACIC. Um I thought we were going to discuss them and see if we wanted to. Tweak them ourselves. Um that's what my understanding was about it. Um because I agree, the way they are now, it's, it isn't clear what the council's role is. And what we're actually agreeing to do or not do. So I thought we were going to kind of discuss that tonight, um was my understanding.
Yeah, I I had heard at the meeting that we were going to be um. There was some information missing and that we would be receiving that. That's, that was my understanding. Yeah, now?
No, I think the RACIC provided those those uh proposals to the council.
Right.
Along with an explanation as to why, and along with that, a some action. That could be taken by the council.
So let's let Paula, Paula speak. Okay.
And this is all a suggestion. Recommendation. So um and I got. My understanding from some of the previous comments from from counselors. Um was uh that um. The 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 issue was, did the council need to. Direct either the mayor or anybody else. Um on these uh on these matters. To um, and first of all, you know, is it, is it, is it something that where the town would benefit? From doing, is there something the town would benefit from doing that the council can? Um can express, whether it's just a consensus of opinion or whether it's a directive of some sort. So the the and. I don't think there's, I mean, there may be more information one could get. Um but I think maybe there are members of the, uh you got, on this particular one, shared use path, you got a letter. From um Jay Everhart representing the Liaison Committee. Several, I think, and also a verbal statement. That um that the process for at least the shared use path between Brown Street and Crab's Branch is well along. And there is, you know, really no room for any input from any neighboring. Community or um on on that process. That said, you know, the accessibility of that path from other. Neighboring communities through town um is something that the town can. Um promote or address. And I think Jay said that the Liaison Committee would be willing to expand their. In involvement to um to facilitate or, you know, any conversations that would be necessary. Where um where um to to improve, to ma- make better use of the. The newly constructed shared path. So that was the opinion of um him and the Liaison Committee. He did not recommend any formalism to um to to, you know, to expand. Uh any, 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 to re- any representatives of neighboring communities. Um beyond the seeking, you know, uh you know, any opinions on what the town. Can do to improve access. So that was, that was what I paid attention to. I don't have the council's.
I would really like the opportunity to just put everything together and. Because I keep hearing questions that I I I don't understand why there are questions and. Even if I I know you all have read a lot of this, but I would like the opportunity to just put all the information together. And read parts of what, yes, has already gotten written, but so that you hear the whole story of each recommendation. Um is that okay with you? Because I still hear just questions and kind of piecemeal stuff together.
No, I I don't think we need to hear anybody read the recommendations. We've read them, so.
I'm not going to read the all, the entire recommendation, but I still hear misconceptions. And I would really like to try to straighten a few of those out. Um if possible, I mean, otherwise, I feel like. I feel like this isn't a real discussion, that you're just, you know, going along the same uh the same path.
If you can identify a misconception and clear it up, I think that would be helpful. But if it's just a question of saying what's in the recommendations, I I don't think that would help.
One misconception. Is that. Part of the recommendation was to get input from other communities, and John just addressed this somewhat. About what has already happened in Washington Grove. I want to read the part of the recommendation that shows that that is not in there at all. Um the purpose is to share the results of the Washington Grove and the DOT negotiation. So that's not asking for input. To share visions of a shared use pathway for the area. The area means the entire area. And that is part of a change of. Uh focus in thinking that we are actually part of a larger area, that yes, we're concerned about Washington Grove. And we're also looking towards the whole community, which is what we said we would do in our resolution. And the other purpose is to find common interests and strategize ways to support each other's vision, especially when negotiating with the county. And the letter from Gatersburg. Um shows that there is at least someone around us who is interested in doing that as well. Um there are suggested actions. But the reason that they are not prescriptive is because. We wanted the gu- town government. To be involved in with the other government in deciding the exact process that they wanted. I mean, we're suggesting contact people and regular update kinds of meetings. But, you know, the John, other people can decide upon that. A criticism of the recommendation um was that um. It was too far along for interference from other communities, and one resident even noted. But but they would be in favor of collaboration for additional roads that would connect the path. And that is part of the purpose. The first bullet states that Washington Grove would just share the results. And there's no mention of soliciting input. The second bullet states that the communities would share their vision. For the area, which means collaborating on additional roads that would connect the path from their direction, as John said. I'm just going to read a little piece of Jay's letter. That and he verbally supported this um recommendation. I'm just going to read a little piece. In consideration of social equity and opportunities. I would support engagement with Rockville, Gatersburg, and any other interested community. In pressing DOT to fund and complete the Washington Grove Connector. Although the connector has finally been included in the CIP after years of effort by a few towns residents. There is no guarantee of funding, as it is competing for funds with other bikeways projects. In the six-year bikeways program, minor project plan. Thus, in the current plan, it is possible that by the beginning of the next, the next decade. The connector will remain uncompleted. The more parties press the county and DOT, the faster the connector will be built. So he is definitely in favor of collaborating. For even just the piece that's already been decided and for the area. Um I do not see how this is, could be a bad thing for now or in the future. Because you're talking about collaborating with neighborhoods. On one transportation issue, and it seems that it would benefit everyone forever. Um you know that this was already supposed to be in the engineering phase, and John and Jay had to work hard. Just to make, just to start all over and get it considered for the the budget now. So, I mean, anything could happen. We're not set. And thinking of ourselves as part of a larger community makes sense to me. And it's part of the promise of the resolution.
So Paula, who the, thank you for um explaining that. So uh so who are the players um in this? From a council perspective, I know, so John is a player and that he's going to send out the notice, and then. How do you envision, like, who's responsible to carry this through within the town?
Well, the mayor sends the invitation to all parties.
Right.
Of the neighborhood. And then the 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 people in every municipality would decide who they want to represent. That municipality in the group. That will um meet periodically. To make sure that everybody understands what's happening and that everybody's on the same page in terms of negotiating with the council.
Yeah, I was, I was just asking, within Washington Grove, would that be like, uh John, would that be Jay? His group or?
They could decide that. I mean, I don't think, I don't think RACIC should be telling. John and Jay, I mean, I would imagine it would be them, but I don't feel like we should be. That prescriptive. I feel, I I if you want us to be, we can, but if you want us to say, this is what we want you to do.
I just want to be clear, I just, I just want to be clear on what we're voting on, because I think this sounds great, but. I just wanna be clear, I just, I just wanna be clear on what we're voting on, because I think this sounds great, but but the, the, you know, what's, what's the plan for this? Because there's a lot.
The suggested actions
Yeah, yeah.
are the mayor sends an invitation to all parties stating the purposes that are listed in the recommendation, and the discussion results in identified consensus that delineates ways the group will continue to support each other. I mean, these are, this is what defines a contact person and a backup contact person that states for periodic check-ins to determine if action is needed to further the agreed-upon strategy. So those are suggested actions that you can tweak, but you're voting on, all you're voting on is whether you want to um, whether you want to collaborate with neighboring communities on shared interests regarding the path now and in the future. Do you want to, to create a mechanism of collaboration on this issue?
So this, this is Barbara. Um, the, this resolution talks about, or the recommendation, I should say, talks about representatives from Emery Grove. Well, Emery, Emery Grove is Gaithersburg.
Heritage Emery, well, we, it doesn't have to, it, we're talking really about neighborhoods, not necessarily who, who, because Gaithersburg, there are a lot of areas in Gaithersburg, and some of those people have um groups that advocate for those specific neighborhoods too. So we're talking about.
But we're a municipality, and so we generally deal with other municipalities. So like Gaithersburg, for example, which we are in discussions with them about shared use paths. So this would, Emery Grove is not a municipality, it's a small community.
I understand what you're saying, but I think that neighborhoods also have particular interests and may, and they could be invited. I know that Heritage Emery Grove specifically asked if they could be invited so that they would know what was happening.
So Paula, I, I uh, I understand what you're trying to do. I think though that um I'm not sure that Emery Grove is within the Gaithersburg city limits, but let's assume it is. Then, it seems to me that we would have to go to the city of Gaithersburg and say we'd be very interested in having specific neighborhoods within Gaithersburg join with us, but then that invitation has to come from the city of Gaithersburg, not from us. I, I think it would be um almost insulting to have somebody there who's representing all of Gaithersburg and then be told, well, we have representatives from specific neighborhoods in Gaithersburg, and they have equal footing with you, even though they're just, you know, the vice president of an HOA. They're not, you know, on the Gaithersburg City Council. So I, I think that can be kind of um more problematic than than you think it's gonna be.
Maybe that's the first step. Maybe the first step.
First of all, Emery Grove, the, what we think of as Emery Grove is not in the city of Gaithersburg.
Yeah.
It's in the county. So you, you can stop talking about Gaithersburg, they don't represent um that ne- that neighborhood. They do represent, you know, other neighborhoods on, along mid, mid-county, mostly on this side of Mid-Cairn. Uh, also who would benefit from this path, of course. Um, so, yeah. Um, so, look, I read this, and I think we, we have luckily, or for, uh, we, we do have a group who is um, who is, ha- ha- has taken on the responsibility of monitoring and working with the county on the shared use path. It's perfectly possible to engage them in looking in the other direction. And that we already have with respect to the Gaithersburg um shared use path in, into Brown Street. To look in the other direction on these issues as to, as to how can the town um um, um, work with neighboring communities to make access to this path, this path? Um, um, to facilitate it. And I think this liaison group is the right, right ones to do it. Um, my suggestion is that, that this, I, I view this recommendation as uh, my answer to this recommendation is to say, hey, you're right, we haven't been reaching out to neighboring communities. Um, we can engage the liaison committee, because we have one, um, to help the mayor and the council reach out concerning um a- any, any um interest or recommendations or, or um ideas regarding um this new pathway. And, and move forward with that. And certainly, you know, communication in the form of letters is the best way to do that. I propose to ask the liaison committee to draft some letter, a letter or two. I, I envision at least two. One, to support the construction, and that would, that's something that they, we would like them to support at the county level. And the other is to um, to invite them to make suggestions with respect to access um to this pathway, which of course is going to be through Washington Grove. So does that, I, I think that goes, you know, most of the way. Um, I, you know, I think the general tenor of this recommendation goes beyond the bike path. Um, it's kind of reminding us that we have not been very good at engaging our neighboring communities in um, in um issues which might impact them, that are not strictly Washington Grove issues. And um, at the same time, expanding those issues, that there, there are them things we should be engaging um them with in, in the interest of this uh, this uh inclusive, uh more uh inclusive um future um with, for, for the town. So that's the way I see it. I mean, I think, I don't think any action by the council is necessary other than to uh perhaps, you know, state your agreement that, uh, you know, this seems like a very positive way to approach uh the um, the involving neighboring communities in the shared use path.
So, so this is Barbara. Can I ask that the Shady Grove Crossing community be included in this as well?
Well.
Right on our doorstep.
Yeah, no, when I say, I keep saying neighborhoods, because yes, absolutely, Shady Grove Crossing and the Amity Community. They will have, you know, you know, a, a new, a new opportu- new access um via this path.
Okay.
So is what we're saying then, that we're going to vote, you know, do we support Washington Grove collaborating with other communities on access to the current shared use path plan and other shared use paths? And then we'll kind of give that directive to the liaison committee group to figure out how they, how exactly they wanna do that, maybe through letters mostly, John said. Is that, is that what we're saying?
Well, I think that's one opportunity for the council to make a statement, yeah. I, I don't think you have to vote on anything here.
Yeah.
Other than.
I'm also sensitive to the idea that we're giving the Shared Use Path Committee more work to do. I know Chris is on the hall, uh, or on the meeting right now, and I, I'm not sure if Jay is or not, but um I would guess that there will be members of the Shared Use Path Committee who are more interested in this than other members are. And, and I think, you know, it, the committee can do whatever it wants. It could make someone who's not one of the co-chairs, you know, the head of this effort to come up with kind of um, I don't wanna use the term boilerplate, but sort of standard language to send out to neighboring, neighboring communities about this issue. And, you know, and then the committee could come back to us. Um, I, I think, John, they'd have to come back to you because they they essentially draft a letter, and then you'd have to sign it. Isn't that right?
Yeah, no, that's what I'm recommending, is that communication should come from official Washington Grove um um individuals, which in this case would be me. Yeah, so they would be drafting the communication and be involved in responses and
Okay.
outreach. We have two members here, at least. Barbara's on the committee. And Donna Shiner, Donna Shiner's here, Shiner Cheese's also on the committee. Uh, maybe somebody else is, I'm forgetting who. But um.
So John, John, what, um, give us the answer. What would your motion be? What are you thinking?
I- i- if the council wants to take an action, I would propose that the council basically approve what was just stated by, believe Eva.
Hmm.
That the, the council supports, um, you know, um, um outreach to neighboring communities to uh, uh, to facilitate uh, um act, you know, uh, community, neighboring community use of the new shared use path.
I'll second Eva's motion.
Right, I think that was about the gist of it. I mean, she may have said it better than I did, I think, but. And we have a second on that?
Mm-hmm, that was me.
Oh, you're the second, okay.
E- e- Eva, it's Eva's motion.
Eva has to agree to make, make it.
Yeah, okay.
Uh, yeah, sure.
All right, any other discussion?
Yeah, no, yeah, yeah, I wanna say one more thing, which is, it sounds like what you're asking the, the Shared Use Path Committee to do is to come up with a list of governments or other organizations like HOAs um that they, that they would want the letter sent to, and also come up with the names of specific people, like find out who the head of the HOA is in Shady Grove Crossing, and, and, you know, that kind of thing. And if we had that list of people, that would, that would help us a lot in the future with other issues.
Right.
Uh, so, so you're, but you're asking the Bike Path Committee, sorry, Shared Use, to do that and then to actually draft a letter to go out to all of those people?
Actually, I hadn't gotten to that point. I'm not sure I asked the Bike Path Committee to do that. If they were willing, or anybody was willing to do that, that'd be great. Otherwise, we have a town clerk who's um, among, among, which has many, many hats, could, would, would be to identify who to contact uh in neighboring um neighbor, neighbor, neighborhoods um to um engage on, on this and other issues.
And to be fair to Eva, her, her, her motion wasn't that specific. Her, hers was just very, uh, very general.
Okay, I just, I just typed something up in the chat, because I can't speak as well as I can write. So the council supports outreach to neighboring communities to facilitate collaboration and communication on shared use paths in the area. Is that what we're saying?
Yep.
And then, and then the specifics of that would be that the liaison group would be carrying out that outreach in with, with letters signed by John and however else they wanna do that.
Eva, will you send me your language, please?
Yes.
I will. Well, she can.
Okay.
Okay, any further discussion? All right, let's move to a vote on Eva's motion, which is the council supports outreach, I'm just gonna read it again. Councils reports outreach to neighboring communities to facilitate collaboration and communication on shared use paths in the area. And I'll take that as a directive to the mayor.
Hmm.
All right, I see two, anybody, everybody on favor? That's unanimous, thank you. All right, um, excellent.
Okay, so, so wait, John, who, whose job is it to sort of let the Shared Use Path Committee know what we expect from them?
Whose do you think? I wish Jay was here. I think they are on vacation. Donna's here, she's been listening.
I'm here.
So, you know, I think they understand what the uh, what, what the council's into.
Yeah, I, I can talk to Jay.
Yeah, okay.
Okay, great.
I appreciate that. That's a very concrete gesture to a neighboring community, something really meaningful. And um something that'll have a test of time, it'll last. And um I think that really is one of the things that will help us move forward with the promise of the resolution. That's not just flowery language. I think that, that really is a real gesture. Also, you know, if you want Ray Sec to help find contact, you know, that's something we want to do anyway. And those would be permanent contacts, so let us know. Um.
And, and, sounds great.
This is exactly what we wanted to happen, this discussion. So that you would decide what would be the best way for you to do that. So thank you very much.
I, I don't know, maybe Barbara knows um, you know, what the liaison group does as far as meetings, and if they have regular meetings, but maybe it would make sense for some RACIC members to have, be at the next meeting for the Shared Use Liaison Committee and, um, but yeah, I think if you guys can work together, that seems helpful.
Mm-hmm. Well, do you want to um, do you want me to let, do you wanna let me know about that, John?
Uh, yeah, let me talk to Jay and see what, he's away for a couple of weeks.
Okay, okay.
Yeah.
All right. Okay, so do you want me to, or do you all wanna move to the next one? How do you wanna do this?
We're moving on, we're moving on. Uh, we, we have a little bit of time constraint here.
Okay.
These things.
I can do this one real fast, because I.
No, wait, I, I would, please, let me finish the, I do wanna handle the next recommendation, and then perhaps we can defer the other two um, to the next meeting or a, you know, in near-term um council uh discussion. But the next one is a recommendation to create a town website protocol. Um, and um, I, we, I'm just going to summarize comments that I heard, I, rather than, rather than, you know, start, let's, let's start from where we actually are. And where we actually are is that Christine, as webmaster, has implemented a, a, a policy of um of vetting um communications to the town before they're posted for content that is not in, inappropriate, that the town would consider inappropriate. In fact, that would be um, would be considered inappropriate by, from a number of aspects. Solely for the posting, remember, anybody can write anything to, uh, however offensive it is. And it becomes a matter of a public, uh, we, we save it and it's a public record. But we are discussing posting in a public manner preemptively, this sort of communication, and that's what's at issue. So, and that's what Christine's uh, uh guidelines, which uh, she's implemented. So the suggestion here, and now Paula, you may.
Okay, all right, well, um two of the, the two parts of the recommendation, as you have said, have already been implemented, and that is not posting anonymous um submission. And um, and there is also a disclaimer on there, correct?
Yes.
Yes, and it refers to the resolution. So both of those were suggestions of racist. And I'm glad that that has already happened. The rest of the recommendation was um, uh, I, I heard pushback from that partly because of uh free speech issues, and those I do feel are legitimate. And I think that Ray Sec is very happy that those two parts of the recommendation have already been implemented. And if it's okay with everyone else, I think that we could put this one to rest. And you can move on to the meeting if that's okay.
Oh, I'm sure the council wants to spend another twenty minutes discussing.
Oh, yeah.
Everybody okay with that?
Yes, yes.
Uh, uh, the recommendations uh having been uh largely, largely uh implemented. Okay, so I, I will suggest, since it's nine fifteen, that we defer the remaining two um recommendations to um another time. Um, and those are, just to remind you, it's the uh, a formal, a more uh formal communication between the town and Heritage Emery Grove and the recommendation to hire diversity, equity, and inclusion specialists. I see I should have put that one at the top. Um, we may end up discussing that one, but I'd like to do it in connection with the budget if there is going to be any discussion, which there may be.
Hmm.
All right, so let's move down to the proposed um budget uh tax rate, uh et cetera, um, which we need. Um, which we need to, I, I recall what, what needs to happen is there needs to be council approval of the budget to go to the town meeting. On May eleventh, so, um. Let's, uh, we've got Jean here, but, but I'll call on her only in connection with it. With questions. I hope the council and anybody else who took a look at the budget, um. Um, will weigh in and momentarily I'm going to bring up, uh, the, um. I'm not going to bring up.
The summary budget is in the ordinance.
I put in the. All right, well, we'll do the ordinance after we do the budget, because ordinance is dependent on. The outcome of the bu, of, of the ordinance, uh, I mean, of the, of the budget finalization. So, uh, let's, uh, start, uh, with the budget. I've got it finally, or I can. Do it on the screen, uh. Okay, so, the salient features are, um. Are the, um, the property tax proposal, where in the world, that's not what we need.
It's on the next page.
The other one, need to start with the financial. Why is this not? Am I showing the wrong thing here?
You want the second page, that's the summary page.
Oh, yeah, thanks. Lost, lost the right page. Okay, is that large enough? So the, the, the property taxes is proposed to, uh, use the constant yield. Uh, a constant yield rate, which is a small decrease based on the increase in assessed valuation. Um, so the tax rate would be slightly lower than for the current year. Um, the dwelling tax, uh, proposed, dwelling tax is, is proposed. It, um, is recovers the cost of our refuse and recycling contract. That contract we, uh, we approved, so then the, the cost of it is, is, is known. But it turns out that the current year's, um, expense for this was significantly less. Than, uh, was in the budget for this year. Therefore, um, we would have two options. Why, we, therefore, we collected, uh, more in the dwelling tax than we actually paid. For that service. So the proposal the council made, uh, that I made, and I think the council adopted so far. Is that, uh, for this year, we would issue a rebate to those properties who were assessed the dwelling tax. That would rebate the amount that we didn't spend this year. And we would deduct that from the actual cost for the coming year. Um, so, as a consequence, you, you see this proposed number being significantly le- less than the, the. The, um, the, um, actual number that we actually spent this year, and that's because of this rebate. So what it boils down to, and it's all explained here, uh, is that it will be a hu, um. A hundred and seventy-three dollars per dwelling. Whereas last year it was two hundred and four, I believe, or something like that, or, or forty. Better than forty.
Forty.
Yeah, so it's a substantial reduction from, from this year. All right, the rest of the town, and the income remains what we looked at previously, the bottom line for, um, income. Uh, it, proposed is here, it is higher than, uh, the budget for this year. Uh, but less than what the, the, the projected actual is for this year. This is, uh, the usual conservative budgeting, um. We, we cannot count on, uh, seven hundred and forty thousand dollars in revenue. So the budget calls for six hundred and eighty thousand anticipated. Um, after that line, we have the ARPA revenue, um, and the ARPA funds, which we are bound and determined. To commit to spending this year in the coming fiscal year. And that's this, uh, four hundred and twenty-three thousand dollars. So we listed that below, not to not skew our, um, our, our, um, budget numbers. Um, so we can compare, uh, the, the other town expenses year, year, year over year. And then we go on to the expenses and, um, I'm not going to go through the expenses. I'm going to let the council address anything you wish. Or anybody else who's here may address, so, um. They, without pointing out any, anything, we, we made all of the adjustments for the. The work session, uh, but, uh. And, um, the bottom line is here and you, 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 you see it here in the budget.
We will change the, um, leaf contract expense.
Oh, correct, yes, the leaf contract, uh, wherever that is.
Higher up.
It's, it's not here, this.
No.
Oh, it's, here it is, uh, yeah, here, leaf collection. Uh, we put in, um, we put in, uh, uh, twenty-four sixty, but it's only going to be sixteen, seven, forty. So it will drop.
So I have two things to bring up. Um, one is that, um, sorry, my cat's being crazy back there. One is that, um, I, since I don't think I'm going to be able to get myself together to figure out a new piece of park equipment. Um, I know we had put a big chunk and I don't know where it went, um. In for a new, for new playground equipment. Um, yes, so, um, I don't know if we want to take that out for this year and think about putting it in for next year or. You know, because the, uh, we had talked about getting the matching funds from program open space, but the deadline for that is just coming up too fast and I don't have time to. Get everything together for that, so, um.
Eva, if we leave that in there, we can move that over to Music Weekend to get a really good dance.
Um, yeah, so, so I just thought I'd bring that up if it makes sense to just. You know, take that out and save it for, for, hopefully for next year. Um, and then the other thing was that, um, and this is, uh, more just a question because, um, I, I had submitted. The, um, the budget that we came up with with the REC committee and, hold on a second. Um, and then we just noticed that some of the, um, numbers were slightly different and, I mean, I know in the grand scheme of things, it's probably not a big deal. But the, um, REC committee was just wondering why those numbers changed, like, I think, um.
Yeah, they changed the draft that you saw last month had the same numbers in them.
Yeah, I think they didn't notice it until this month, but like, um.
Yeah, overall, you know, the process is, I take all the submissions and put it together. John and I sit down, we look at. Last year or what we think the current year's going to be and just see what has it tended to be. And then if there are large increases, like I had asked you some questions, then, uh, I take those back to John and, um. We put it into the grand scheme of the entire budget. And sometimes some things are increased, uh, over somebody's submission, sometimes they're decreased. Um, and so the numbers here is what was there last month, um.
Yeah.
Overall, the REC budget actually went up.
Yeah.
Um, so, uh, the few tweaks that John and I suggested. That were decreases, really, even with those, the, the REC budget went up, it was increased, so.
Okay. Okay, yeah, I think, I think maybe there was some concern that, um, in the past, people have been spending. A lot of their own money and like not getting reimbursed from the town and, um. That, you know, we wanted to make sure we had the money in the budget so that people weren't spending their own money on town events. Um, so, sorry, um.
Is that, is that your cat?
Look, look, Eva, let me address that.
Yeah.
Uh, you know, nobody can, can anticipate necessarily, um, you know, in detail expenses. Everybody's a volunteer. It, it certainly is, is great that people are willing to put up money to support an activity. But they shouldn't feel any hesitation to ask. Can I spend this money? I'm willing to, I, I, I'll front the money, will I get being reimbursed? This is the general approach to any volunteer spending. Sometimes it just stays within the committee. I said, oh, yeah, we have a budget, no problem, go ahead. If it exceeds the budget, then, uh, in, in a material way, then you talk to the treasurer.
Right.
Hey, look, we, we want, and we need to do this. It, it literally just takes a phone call or an email. So nobody.
I, I think I'm just trying to explain why it might have seemed like some of these numbers jumped up is because we're trying to be better about. Saying, okay, this is actually how much it costs, this is actually how much was spent, and. So anyway, I'm just speaking for the REC committee, uh, on their behalf, that this was.
Linda's here, Linda Bayland.
So, ho, let me get my child under control.
I want, I want to point out that the REC committee budget has a new line item called fa, um, family program, maybe it's an old line.
It's an old one.
Old one, and it's, uh, it, it, in, in a way, it, it provides funds for a variety of, um. Of, um, events that could be, could be called the family program, so, eh, you know, if that. So if the budget overall is deficient, then we need to hear about it, but I, uh, as, as, um. Jean pointed out, it is higher and I, I thought it was in line with what was.
Hey, John, the one thing that, um, maybe it's somewhere else, is for the clay tennis courts. My understanding is.
Can we finish with the rec?
Is it, that is part of the rec?
No, it's not.
What?
No, the clay tennis court is part of.
Yeah, what do you think I'm talking about the sign, that we're talking about the signage in the lock still? No, I'm talking about the ma, it says, uh, for the ta, clay tennis courts, my understanding is that, um, RJ is going to go in. And clean up the courts as far as the.
Peter, can, wait, we're talking about the REC committee. They don't have anything to do with the clay tennis.
Oh, they don't. It says clay tennis court maintenance.
Recreation expense, that's not the.
It's what?
It's not part of the REC committee. It shows up in this part of the accounting system.
Uh huh.
But the REC committee as a whole doesn't necessarily.
Okay, so.
Yeah.
Oh, so that's covered, that's okay, so.
Yeah, yeah, it's like, you have the woods committee and they're, they show up in the parks budget. But they have their own budget set aside from F and B.
Uh huh.
Multiple committees can feed into an area's budget. So, that, that's why you see that, and I have an easy answer for your question, but let's finish with the rec.
Okay, okay.
Sorry about that.
So, um, it is.
All right, this is Rob. Since Eva's indicated that she's not going to, um, be able to. I'm not sure what, 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 what was involved in, um, spending the money on the playground equipment. Um, if that's coming out, can we just restore the original numbers that the REC committee asked for, um, that were. As I understand it, reduced, that, I, I heard the same concern from Lisa, but I don't know the specific numbers. But, but it seems like whatever those probably, you know, line item reductions were in other categories. Are probably going to be more than made up for if we are no longer spending.
So, but I can tell you, there were three areas that decreased. The Fourth of July. They asked for seven fifty and based on prior experience, we thought five hundred was enough. We can put an extra two fifty there. Labor Day, they had asked for six hundred. Uh, there were no expenses this year at all. So we put it to four hundred, we can increase it by two hundred. Um, and for the Halloween party, they wanted to. Utilize all of the family program budgeting. And add it to the Halloween party. Um, and John and I liked the idea of keeping the family programs separate. Yes, they could use that money. But we liked the idea because they weren't sure whether they wanted to use the family programs. It was an idea. So we thought it was safer to keep it as a separate line item. And so the Halloween party, uh, only came down by one hundred dollars. So they were very small decreases. But we can, yeah, your idea of taking out of the thirty-five.
I don't.
I don't, you know, that's a possibility. If, if the council would like to add back, it's like. Four hundred and fifty dollars, we can do that.
Well. I, I wouldn't, I wouldn't be, you know, I'm not gonna fall on my sword over the REC committee's budget request. But a, as I, as I say, we, we, we don't, um. We, we have a flexible approach to spending in the REC committee. If they don't spend it on one in one event, they, uh, using an overspend in another event. That's fine, because that's, uh, the, the way the plans, uh, um, and, and the event expenses worked out. So, you know, just looking at this, they didn't spend any money on the Labor Day, all right, this year. They may spend, um, what, four hundred, they may spend six hundred, I don't, we don't know. But they can always take money from this family programs. I mean, there's plenty of flexibility here. You know, at this point, I wouldn't recommend changing any of these numbers. Um, the thirty-five thousand that, uh, is proposed to be removed from the playground equipment. Um, I agree, that can be removed since even if we get a, eh, they act together for next year, make the application to program open space. They won't decide till the very end of the fiscal year twenty-five, that's. Would be June thirtieth. We won't spend that money until fiscal twenty-six, so this doesn't need to be in the fiscal twenty-five budget. So that can come out. I, I think the REC committee is not going to be strapped for any, eh, they, they, they. You know, unless they had a lot of hidden expenses that nobody asked for reimbursement for. Which I started this discussion, that should not happen.
Yeah, I, I think, I think the, if we can just reassure them that. If people spend money for a town event, they can get reimbursed for it. Then I think that, that was a, a concern. That, you know, we wanted to make sure we had it, a, a line item in the budget so that people could get reimbursed for things. That's the.
Yeah, and Eva, as long as they have receipts and it's reasonable. You know?
Well, I would back that off. If you're going to exceed the budget. Just check with the treasurer. You, you know, this is, this is, this is typical, this is standard operating procedure. In, in organizations. Um, they either have rigid budgeting or they have, um. You know, if you exceed, you need approval. And we operate by exceed, you need approval. And, you know, it, it's a simple matter, it shouldn't take a big effort, but it keeps everybody informed. When the, uh, you know, when the, the Labor Day events are suddenly going to cost a thousand dollars, maybe for a good reason. And everybody's happy with that, but.
Okay, yeah, I think that makes sense.
Okay.
All right, on to the clay tennis court issue that Peter raised. Peter?
Yeah, no, I just, I just didn't know, I, I just didn't see that number in there, so as, as Jean said, it's somewhere else.
Yeah, if you look up in the parks section, John, if you scroll up a little bit, we have a contracted contingency there. Fifteen thousand.
Oh, okay, that should.
It, again, it's a little wonky parks recreation, like you're all together, you know, but, um, it's in there.
Okay, thanks, good.
So in case anybody is, has forgotten or, or didn't know, this year, there were proposals to. Do some significant, some, some, some. We'd spend money on the clay courts to refurbish in a, in a number of ways, one of which is to replace with new tapes. The, the tapes we've been using for many, for a bunch of years, so that costs, uh, a chunk, both in labor, uh, mostly. Much in labor. There's a few other items with respect to the tennis courts and, and, and the point is that we have this contracted contingency. Which, um, which is there specifically for this sort of, um, this sort of, uh, expense. It's not an annual, what, 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 what's happening at the clay courts, there are some annual routine expenses, but, but, but the ones Peter is. Uh, I wanted, wanted to be sure was covered were some, some extraordinary, um, you know, periodic.
This is Barbara, uh, can I ask a question? So I have a question, uh, under expense for planning and zoning. The adopted twenty-four amount is forty-seven thousand, six hundred dollars. And proposed for FY twenty-five is seventy-six, four hundred.
Stormwater of thirty seven thousand is the biggest culprit.
Okay. All right, thank you.
Oh yeah, right, down here, yeah. All right, any other questions about the budget? Detail, the budget detail. Okay, great. So let's move along then to the. Financial plan. Okay, which is shown. Shortly here. Okay.
So the only difference on this one from the one you saw at the last meeting is that. For any changes we made to revenue and expenses, I had to filter it through. So the numbers changed accordingly. No big changes, really.
Right, so, so the features. So what are the features? In, in the, in the general fund. The balance anticipated is one point four five million dollars. The, the expenses were four hundred and seventy six thousand. The, and notice that, 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 that is a, a net surplus compared to the revenue. So this number has gone up. Compared to when the year started. Year. So the proposed budget calls for less revenue. Than we are actually going to have this year anticipated. It calls for more expenses and a deficit. So there will be a, that is the. Line item from the reserve. And so this projection shows the fund balances decreasing. Here by a net of one hundred and about thirty thousand dollars. That's just the summary of it. And the road, the road fund, we keep, as, as Gina has, has explained, we keep a separate account. Because the state requires a separate account because we get highway user funds. And the balance at the beginning, at the beginning of anticipated balance. If we spend, assuming we spend this amount here, which we have not yet spent the bulk of that. Will be twenty one thousand dollars. The budgeted amount for revenue, which by the way, the. Was a big issue in the state legislature this year, which just concluded, but they restored all the highway user. Revenue sharing that the governor had proposed striking. So it's back there. It's not only back there for, for the coming year, but it's back there for the next year and the following year, at least. Obviously, it still has to be appropriated in those years, but that's good news. So the plan calls for spending. The, the balance of this fund. I mean, the amount we've received next year, which will still leave a positive balance. Okay. The count, mostly it's for accounting purposes and to understand. That we have funds that are earmarked for road use only, and this is.
And we do have to file a report annually with them as to how we, how much we've spent.
Okay, any questions about the financial?
Nope.
Right. Okay, so the last item that we just want to review, we should review. Is the capital improvement. Plan, which we made some adjustments to from. Last, the last meeting, so. Here is the plan. And this is just so that we, 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 we look ahead a bit, we can look ahead and anticipate. Expenses in, in coming years. And understand, you know, how that might impact the town's finances. So the expenditures for fiscal twenty five, which are all in the budget. Now. Here, this thirty five thousand will be. Why it doesn't like me here for some reason? Why can't I do that?
Did, was the decision to just leave it in the current, in the twenty five budget?
Move it to twenty six.
Move it to twenty six. So take it out of the budget.
Take it out, yeah, we don't know what. Okay. Yeah, the bulk of the, the bottom line here, which for some reason I'm having trouble, there we go, is the art of spending here. Up here. Sorry, the strain, storm drainage remediation. Now, our actual spending may be higher than that. But it, we don't have those funds in, anywhere in accounting. It's the state bond grant. Which is a reimbursement. Our reimbursement funds, so that, that we have not accounted for that. We just know that if we. If we spend on certain project, we can get reimbursement. From the state up to two hundred and fifty thousand dollars for the next five years. Yes, they're two thousand twenty nine. All right. Any comments then on the, on the, on the capital improvement plan? Everybody's taking a look at it. Okay, and such it is. All right, so. We therefore have established that there will be a minor adjustment. The only adjustment, we made some adjustments. Adjustment to the budget that will affect the use of reserves. None of the, won't affects the proposed tax rate. That, that we, we need to adopt. And for that, Jean has prepared a ordinance. Required ordinance. Hopefully he took a look at it, you know, it, it's, it's pro forma in a way. We use the same ordinance every year. But what it specifies is shows our anticipated revenue. A total accounting. And expenditures and. Mainly it, it shows, it, it, it states that this will be the tax rate. Et cetera. And then there's a tax rate on. On public utility and personal property. Business property. So. And it states that for this year, the going tax will be the hundred and seventy. Okay, we need a motion to, oh, and it also states that we are allocating thirty thousand dollars from our reserve. Into another fund we keep, which is the border property acquisition reserve. So, which has been building up. It's, it's in the financial plan. And is a bookkeeping, accounting of money we have, have set aside for a specific purpose in this case. Should we need to acquire property? For some reason. Okay, need a motion to approve this and.
Are you sure about that ordinance number?
No, I put one in because is there been another, what number? I, I have no. One, because I couldn't find anything else.
Okay, I, I, I will go back to my list.
Well, has XX. It's just, I put it in the, in the, in the.
So this is Barbara. I have a question. So if we just agreed to take out the thirty five thousand dollars for the playground equipment. Doesn't that change some of these numbers?
You're absolutely right. The use of reserves number.
So how can we move this forward if the number isn't the right number?
Yeah, there'll be a couple of numbers that will change.
You could agree to the rates. Won't be changing.
This is an introduction of this ordinance. The actual ordinance will be passed in May and have the exact number.
In May at the annual town meeting and numbers could change at that meeting as well.
Exactly. So these numbers are all for introductory. This is the council's. The, the town meeting version of the budget that has these numbers is what these numbers represent.
All right, so John, I'll make the motion to, to approve the proposed fiscal year twenty five budget. Is that correct? Did I say it right?
Yes.
Okay.
Adoption of this ordinance, thank you. Any other discussion? All in favor then? With, with the modifications we've discussed, you'll have, you'll see whether they've been done properly when, when we get to the town.
Did it have to be seconded?
Who was the second?
Five seconds. Okay, all favor. Yeah, everybody voted. That was unanimous. Okay.
Right.
All right, now we move on to last substantive matter, which is the stormwater infrastructure maintenance. I, you know, I'm sure he won't pour it over that. With great care. And I'm going to throw it up here and I'm going to try and highlight what I, you know, to the best I can. The features of the proposed RFP. So for one, we've, we've pushed out the, the, the bidding bid due date into June. Assuming we approve the RFP, which by the way, will see a few additional alterations, which should be as part of the approval. All of which will be either small technical changes or changes to the, the portion. The, the, the budget work plan. Part, part which, which could perhaps use some, some polishing up to ensure we get the numbers. That, that most useful budget, proposed budget numbers. So what we're approving though is basically. The following, the, the group who, we've put this together now from the point of view of similar, quite similar to. What we did with the road, with our road paving. We've identified a, a, a whole bunch of areas where. Where stormwater infrastructure maintenance. And notice we're calling it maintenance. That's because we don't want to get, get. To do anything that entails too much permitting from the county. We may entail some permitting from the county, but that, and that not only costs money, but takes time. So we're calling this a maintenance. A maintenance RFP. All right, where was I? Oh yeah, so we're doing it, we're doing it like we did the road. Proposal and we have a map, which is going to be the easiest way to, I can get back to the map. This map.
I hope you can all. Showing on our screens, John. Did you share your screen?
Oh, I'm not sharing the screen yet. That is a problem. I'm sorry, I thought we were saying, there we go. Here's the map. So the map, the map points out all the areas we are requesting work. This is a design built. Approach, so we are not. Including detailed specifications of the work done in any of these areas. What we do, what we do, what we do specify is the sort of. In, in general, whether, whether we want swell repair, whether we want bioswells, a, a proposal. Whether we're, what sort of culvert repair? And, and associated water collection and, and, and outflow. All of that is, is those details. Will be expected to come from the bidder and therefore there'll be an expense associated. With that as well as with the construction. So this map just shows the areas and you can see all the areas and I'm just going to go through. Area one up here is the intersection of Acorn and Chestnut Road, where we need, we need the, the culverts enlarged. And replaced. We are, as, and, and, and whenever I mention culverts, it includes the, the, it's called the sump, meaning that. Where the, where the water goes into the culvert, where the water comes out. But you'll note this little triangle here that. The proposal is to get a bid. This is a bid, not an approval to do it. This contemplates a, what is called a water quality. Feature. Facility, water quality facility, meaning a, a, an area that would be designed. To detain, detain re, water flow and absorb water. To reduce the flow through the culvert system which crosses Chestnut Road. Currently at this, it also proposes to remove some of the pavement from this intersection. All, most of you should know that intersection is overly large in terms of pavement. And at the, at the indicated corner. And so the proposal is to take out some of that pavement, make that intersection. More similar to the other intersections such as its center and chestnut, maybe not quite that narrow, but you know, but, but. But utilize the pavement area as well as the, this corner for this water. This, this facility. Okay, that's the work in that area. So area two, just going through them one by one, is along Chestnut Avenue, the walkway. And the proposal there is to improve the swell and replace it. Where appropriate with a bioswell. Reminding you what a bioswell is, a bioswell. Is a, is a constructed, well, let me show you. You, you publish it all, remember what a bioswell is, but here, here, here's a, a, a diagram. Of a bioswell. It basically is a feature that is covered by natural planting, whether it's grass. Or anything, it could be other things. But underneath it, it has the ability to retain. A lot of water flow and allowing the water to absorb into the ground. That water that doesn't absorb into the ground, there's a pipe in here at the bottom. You'll note the depth of this thing is like three feet or something. Four feet from the surface. Water would collect in the pipe and be, 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 be sent to further down the, the system. And back out, in our case, back out, either into a culvert or often just back out onto the surface. So that's a bioswell and the net effect would be to absorb a lot more water. Stormwater and certainly to hopefully reduce the flow. So bioswells are contemplated along this area of Chestnut. This is between where the church. There, there is an asphalt swell, as many of you should recall, running from Chestnut Road. Down to Chestnut Avenue, makes a little turn and then runs down right through this area. Where area seven is indicated. So, but, but this bioswell portion is right here on this part. Here. Area two B is the same thing, but on this section of Chestnut. This is the section of Chestnut where we have. Water, a lot of water collection, the center part right, or if you can see where my arrow is, is the low point. Water then flows, flows between the houses here and this house. This is Bruce Christ. And flows through. Jean is the recipient of some of this. And goes to Hickory and then is collected down here and eventually, hopefully is supposed to flow out Center Street. So anyway, bioswells is, is, is an improvement of the swales is proposed. To again, retain, detain a lot of more water. It will not detain all the water. Water will still cross the private property about where my, about where I'm showing it here. But the whole system will be improved. As far as, and hopefully there will be less, it will only see the overflow. It will only see the overflow during really heavy winds. Which this system will of course not be able to fully mitigate. That's area two, two A and two B. Area three are these circles here. These are culverts of these intersections. It's improving the culverts and the sumps. Not going to go into that anymore. Area four is on the south side of Oak. There's four A and B. It's Oak, uh, Oak between um between Chestnut Road and Chestnut Avenue, between Chestnut Avenue and Hickory. Between Chestnut Road and Chestnut Avenue, it, we, we already have a uh, swell, a natural swell. The proposal is to improve that, install bioswell if it's feasible wherever possible. It will then cross the avenue of, you know, probably in a pipe. Um, and then um, between Chestnut Avenue and um and Hickory, we have some asphalt. And we're asking for a proposal to create a swell or bioswell that involves removing asphalt from this area as well. Um, this is a proposal. I'm not going to go into the details. It will affect parking. But it's, it, we, we want to get a cost on making this improvement since we have a, a significant amount of water uh, being collected down Oak. Lot of it is flowing on the Chestnut. We don't want that. We want to try and mitigate that. So that's the other area for the bit. Five, area five, south side of Center Street. Pretty much the same story, except the asphalt is up here. Ac- across from uh, the, um, their house here, the former Kurt's house. And um, so removing some asphalt and installing a swell or bioswell. As well as um, then the past Chestnut Avenue. Area six, area six is this rectangle here. This is where it was uh, uh, the, the Soltz study suggested a gravel wetlands could be installed. This is a significant feature. Again, a water detention facility, a, 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 a water quality facility. Um, it would tear up uh, all of the, the pavement, would utilize the area to again um co- collect water, slow it down, absorb it, but then pass it on where it currently goes into the woods. So that's, that, that's area six. Area seven. Area seven is a similar feature. Um, uh, uh, entering into this um, narrow area where the current asphalt swell runs between these, these homes. And there, there is uh, looks to be room to put in a water quality feature between roughly between Chestnut Avenue for maybe a hundred feet, a hundred and twenty-five feet. It would um, it would include then a walkway to be sure you could still walk here. Because I know many people use this. It's the only way to walk across this block here.
Mm hmm.
Okay. So area eight. Area eight is back here up at Chestnut uh, Road. It's below the park. And uh, proposes to um, improve this swell to carry the water from uh, the west side. Sorry, of um, Chestnut Road down to Center. And then into this improved system in the magenta, um, with the magenta uh, line. Um, that involves removing an existing, believe it or not, asphalt swell, you know, along uh, along uh, uh, that exists here along the road. So that's area eight for improvement. The last one is area nine. Um, why is area nine still on here? Oh yeah. Yeah. Area nine is, is, is to improve the culvert system um, at, and I forgot.
The sump over there is, is all clogged and stuff, right? They.
Yeah, exactly.
They replaced it after the electric charging station.
The, yeah, the, the culvert's been taken care of, but the sumps have not, the entries. So that's the proposal at area nine. Okay. So as you can see, there, there's a lot of parts to this. Uh, all of that is described in the RFP up here. Get back up to the top. You will see that each of these areas has their uh, has their description in here. And um, et cetera. We go into the scope of work. We've added a variety of things, uh, including some, some requesting calculations of water flow before and after the installation of, of some of the features. Uh, and addressed a, a good many of, of, if not all of uh, the discussion we had where Bob was uh, Bob Boer was pointing out and was uh, suggesting that we improve the information we get so that we can evaluate. Which of these um, various areas to actually are, which our funding would support and will make sense to do. Um, we do not, in no way will we have the funds to do all of this work. But we expect to have funds to do a significant part of the work. Um, and which we can then choose based on the uh, on the bids and the proposals.
Mm hmm. Good.
So that's the strategy. This is the current version, which is virtually complete. We've addressed almost everybody's concerns. Um, it could use a little bit of polishing here and there, just to be sure that uh, you know, we've covered, we get what we want. Oh, I've forgotten to point out two other things. Um, one is that anybody bidding on this will be required um, to do an onsite walkthrough. Um, prior to submitting their bids so that we can go over the details in all of these areas. And we will, uh, we will produce a written um a written document so that everybody uh, has a, or at least notes from that walkthrough. So everybody is bidding on the same thing and, 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 and all the specifics that we um we can um, discuss and that point out will have been pointed out. And the, the um bidders will be invited to present their proposal to the council. So before awarding the contract, we um, plan to hear from um, the bidders as to uh, mostly to uh, uh, provide an opportunity for uh, questioning um, concerning um, their, their plans. Remember this is a design build. So you know, there can be some, some uh, differences between, between contractor proposals.
Mm hmm.
All right. I'm gonna stop talking. Uh, but, but we put a lot of work into this. When I say we I mean, uh, I mean Patty Klein, uh, Bob Boer, uh, myself, Dave Coslon. Joan has been present through, through a lot of this and Jason Mills with, from Soltz who has been advising us. Uh, and um, on, on the technical aspects so that we, we get enough of it right, that we will get some, some useful input. Um, he has pre, pre-identified at least two, probably three vendors who will be interested in bidding on this. Um, we think it's substantial enough to interest hopefully um, um contractors. We, the, the, the timing of, of doing the work. We think is flexible. It, it, it would be great to get it done by the end of fiscal twenty-five, that is June of, of twenty-five. But if it isn't, it isn't. For the purposes of the funding, we, we simply need to have a contract in place to spend our funds. Um, by the end of this year. By the way, our funds can include um, the state bond funds. Which would, will support the same sort of work.
Hmm.
So in reality, we have approximately seven hundred and fifty thousand dollars available. We do not have to spend the, the state bond funds. We do have to spend the ARPA funds. So we do have to spend about five hundred thousand. But it could be up to seven hundred and fifty thousand. All right. Any questions? Okay. I, I, we made serious effort to, to, to create something that will give us enough information to no matter what we can, we, we choose to do, will improve water, stormwater uh, uh stormwater system will renovate um, the existing system, which as we all know has deteriorated just over time and, and other things. I see Patty. I would like to say something. Go ahead.
Yeah. No, just a, it's a quick question on the logistics. Uh, I don't remember how it's stated in here, but in order to schedule that onsite visit, will they just call the town office, call Kathy and schedule because we need a town representative to be there. Just want to make sure.
Yes. Uh, the intent is to, to get everybody together and do one walkthrough. So everybody is present. Um. Yes, Jason recommended that. Uh, he didn't think there was any, there, there, there was any concern about, you know, one contractor revealing, just saying something at, at a walkthrough that would provide, put them at a disadvantage or something, but uh, I, I'm trying to find what you're, you requested, but you know.
It's probably in the boilerplate language. I.
I, I, it's here. Um, um, there's also a place about questions, bid evaluation.
Okay.
We're, we're, we're aiming to award the contract in July. Um, it can slip from that, but uh, that's the current. If, if we issue the RFP in the next week or so, then we believe we've have, we've left enough time for a uh, the site visit questions and uh, bidding between uh, sort of the end of April and, and beginning of July.
So, so John, I would, I would just like to say that um, having read this final version, I was really impressed and delighted with what Patty, you, um, Dave and Joan and Bob and Steven, whatever, whoever else, um, you did to make this. And what, I was involved with this in the beginning before I was kicked out. And it was a mess. It was like the whole grove and you really, when you look at that diagram, it looks so simple and so easy, but I know you put a lot of work into this and, and um, very comprehensive. And I really liked the changes that um, you came up with at the end. So, thank you.
It's John's map. You can congratulate him. It's very nice.
Well, you got Center Street on there down at the bottom with as well. So that's, that's what I was really, that's what I love to see.
Right. Um, I didn't, I didn't, that, thank you, Peter. Um.
Sorry. Go, go ahead, John.
Just a sec. I just want to point out the evaluation. We, we've specified because you know, contractors want to know what, you know, how they're going to be uh, uh, you know, how, how they're, they're bid is going to be evaluated. So that's in here as well. Uh, a large, a, a fair amount of it notices in cost. So leaving us, you know, the flexibility we need because this proposal. Uh, this, this RFP is going to generate uh, you know, a, a, way over our current budget. But will give us, will give us a mu- a very good idea of what to aim for if we, in, in, in getting funds for, for this and for the West Woods, which is going to be uh, substantial, but, but that's for another day.
Hmm.
Okay.
I, I, I had a question. So I, I don't know if it was two or three meetings ago when um, Bob Boer brought up his concern that the, if the prior iteration didn't have um, kind of m- metrics or, or, or require um, you know, metrics to ensure that, that what we're doing actually are, is going to make a difference. So is, is, I, I gather he was, yeah, I think you said he was working with you. It was this. This now reflects his and, and addresses concerns?
We, uh, yeah. So I'm, uh, I'm going to speak for Bob because he's not here. He's also on vacation.
Yeah.
Uh, but what Bob, 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 but, but what Bob had said was um, you know, from an engineering standpoint was lacking. We, we all agree is lacking. But it's lacking because as we discovered in the case of the West Woods. A um, an assessment uh, of the um, in detail. Um, of just the design and engineering would be in the many, many hundreds of thousands of dollars. That's the first point. Secondly, we have to spend ARPA money now. We, we don't have time to backtrack and do that. So what could we do to at least, and, and his point is, you know, how, how can we, how can we determine what um, will have an impact on our, 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 our positive impact? And how much of an impact will it have? And so that's been inserted in there. There have been metrics inserted in all those water retain, uh, wa- uh, water quality feat uh, uh, facilities. There are calculations re- required to show what the impact of that will be. The bioswells, same thing. What the impact of a bioswell will have on that area compared to the um, the standard evaluation which Soltz has did in, in certain areas, but now we're going to call for it in very specific areas. Uh, on the existing, on the calculated um, um, water, water, stormwater runoff. They base it on a, and on a hundred year flood or whatever number of years it is. There, there's a whole, you know, approach to doing this. And so we've requested that information. That's part of the, the bidding, uh, the bid. Uh, uh, part of, part of what we need to get uh, after we make awards. So they'll do that or before we get it more. So yeah, we've, we've addressed that. I think Bob has resigned himself that, uh, you know, okay. We aren't, we aren't able to do this in the most systematic way, but we've, we've done what we can to, you know, have what we need to make a, a, you know, get the best result for the funds we need to spend.
Okay.
And, and Soltz is confident that when we get the calculations um, that are supposed to now accompany the uh, proposals. Working with them will be able to evaluate. Okay. Do, do we think that the, that the proposal will, you know, a, a, address essentially um, and, 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 and actually provide the kind of remediation that we are e- expecting?
I, I'm not sure I can speak for them it quite that directly, but um you know, I, Ja- Jason Mills is, uh, understands quite well what the town would like to happen.
Right.
And what our issues are. And um, he has stated repeatedly that um many of the, most of this work, even the work that simply um, re- re- restores um, our swales, even if you didn't put in bioswells or whatever, which would see a significant improvement in town. It wouldn't. It wouldn't improve the situation in the West Woods.
Right. No, we, I understand. Yeah. I think we all understand that.
Second thing, and that, the idea there is to, is to detain the water. And you know, deliver less water to the West Woods. Unfortunately. Um, as I think we all agree. The, the estimated amount of water going into the West Woods from this, that side of town. Uh, of, of the total water flowing into the West Woods that has caused the eroding problems, that the problems there with the ditch, the big, major ditch. Is maybe twenty or twenty-five percent of the water. So if we can cut that by a half, we've reduced it by ten or fifteen percent. That's not going to solve the West Woods problem.
Hmm.
No way can this solve the West Woods problem. The only way you can solve the West Woods problem is by addressing other inflows. And creating a, uh, you know, creating a water, a, a water retention system that uh, won't uh, be so detrimental or essentially will eliminate damage to the woods. That's a different project.
Right. No, I understand. We, we understand that. Yeah.
Yeah. Okay. I, 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 I think we'll see a significant improvement in town.
That's right. That's.
Solve all the problems.
Yeah.
I, I can guarantee you that the, 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 the people complaining about water in their backyards off of Chestnut Avenue are still going to have that problem because when we get enough rain, the system will, is not going to handle it and you're still going to get uh, water run, running through their area. But that, there are ways to approach that, but it can't be part of this project. It can be part of the next project.
Okay.
If the town wants to get involved. Private problem. Right.
Well, I can just make a quick comment. I think actually they will see some improvement because putting the swell or bioswell on Chestnut Ave and, um, Chestnut Road. I think actually they will see some improvement because putting the swell or bioswell on Chestnut Av- um, Chestnut Road, I'm sorry. And as well on Chestnut Avenue, that's gonna catch a lot of that sheeting water before it actually gets. To some of those properties below Chestnut Avenue. We're trying to, you know, catch it upstream a little bit more than it has been. So I, I still think there will be, so I'll say qualitative, but there'll be some improvement across the board. And hopefully, that makes water going so rapidly into the West Woods. We're trying to slow it down, right?
Okay.
Okay, that's my two cents.
Do we need a motion to?
Yes, we need a motion to.
Yeah, it's like a motion.
I, I move.
I second it.
All right, all in favor, um, and once again, we're voting on, thank you. Um, all right, looks like unanimous.
I, I don't have any language for the, I just, somebody just said motion. Can I get?
I'm sorry. Mo- mo- motion to approve, um, issuance of the, uh, stormwater infrastructure maintenance RFP as.
Okay.
Okay.
Thank you.
Yeah, we're gonna tweak it a little bit more and then, then, then see what we get. I, 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 I think we've left enough time in case we have some. You know, inadequate response or whatever to, to, uh, to, to, to fall back and reconfigure. I don't, I'm, 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 I'm gonna presume we don't have to do that, but, you know. It, this is a, a, for, a bit, a first for this, for, for Washington Grove. So we have to, have to, um, be aware of, you know, we, we, we could face. Still some other challenges. Remember, we got our bid on the West Woods.
Yeah.
Just for a study and the, the two, the two bids were like over three hundred thousand more, way beyond. Well, okay, thank you so much.
Yeah, no, a, a big thanks and kudos for, uh, all who were involved in putting this together. This was a lot of work.
Yep.
Now, it's been, it's been a learning experience for all of us, but, uh, I, I, I think we're now at a place where hopefully we'll be able to. See some improvements by carrying it forward. Okay, um, going back to our agenda. Um, I'm skipping right over new business. Too late for new business. The town council reports, um, I put some things of note. Is there anything that is, um, uh, worth, I'm just gonna look through this, uh, to see whether I need to. Report on anything here. Um, no, uh, additional playground, that's what we already dealt with that. Twelve trees to be planted in April. Okay, yeah, so I, I, you know, unless somebody has anything they want to say about their reports, um.
Yeah, I would say one thing, um, which it's taken forever, is that Fourth Avenue. Between McCauley and Washington Grove Lane has finally been paved, fixed. Signs are up, it's welcoming, it looks beautiful. And I've seen people walking on it without tripping. And I think that, um, that I'm, I'm very happy with, uh, how that came out.
Good.
And Paula, Paula left during that.
Thank you, sir. All right, um. All right, so a motion to approve posting of council reports, please.
So moved.
I'll second.
Okay. All right, all in favor of posting the council reports? Thank you all, that's unanimous. Right, okay, that brings us to the, uh, minutes. Uh, sent around the minutes of March eleventh. I think I got a few comments which I, I incorporated into the minutes. Um, so, uh, I need a motion to approve the March eleventh minutes. This is the open session minutes. I will comment on the closed session we had March eleventh.
Uh, oh, sorry.
Those minutes are also closed. But they are a matter of record and I have prepared those minutes. Um, and, um, uh, this is not a pretty, very serious. And remember, it was legal advice concerning neglected maintenance of properties. Um, and so I prepared those minutes. I'm gonna file them with, uh, with Kathy so that we've, we've, we've crossed the Ts and dotted the Is for the closed, closed meeting. But this, the March eleventh meeting for the open session, uh, uh, you all had a chance to look at hopefully.
Motion to approve, Barbara.
I'll second, Mary.
Any other comments on the, um, the minutes?
No.
Thank you all in favor of approving the minutes. That's unanimous. Right, I, um, I'm sorry, I had inti- I had hoped to get the, there's still some outstanding minutes. The February twenty-seventh meeting, which was largely, uh, a, a discussion, uh, public input. On the MacArthur Hall naming. And the March twenty-fifth minutes, um, which was the budget, uh, work session. As well as the ADU, um, passing the ADU ordinance. Um, so those will be forthcoming for the May twentieth council meeting, um, for sure. Right, all right, so we are at adjournment. Uh, uh, no, first of the next meetings, the ma- the, the town meeting. May eleventh at eight. Uh, Kathy sent around a reminder that everyone, I have to talk to Rob particularly. Everyone needs to submit an annual, um, an annual, uh, report on your areas of responsibility. Uh, written, which we distributed to residents. And, um, then, uh, all of you are present and can accept questions, uh, concerning your reports. Uh, for, uh, this is, this is annual covers obviously the whole year.
What, what do you need that by, John?
Oh, yeah, right, so it's the meetings, May eleventh. Like to get them up and available, so let's say, may, that Monday or Tuesday, so whatever that is. So sixth, fifth or sixth.
Okay, thanks.
Yeah.
Sometimes you've asked the committee to do like the end of the year thing or just report on accomplishments, but you didn't last year, I don't think. Is that gonna happen?
Um, well, I haven't looked at the agenda for the, you, are you, are you, you referring to actually, actual presentations at the town meeting?
Yeah, well, at some years that you asked me to do that and some years you.
Yes, I, I have to look at the, I haven't put together the agenda.
Okay.
I'll be in touch. That seems to be the right, you know, the, the, the thing to do. Uh, all right, and I will remind everybody, it will, the meeting will be virtual. We decided that tonight. Um, okay, and now we, if we, we set the May twentieth meeting. Any, anybody else have anything else before we adjourn? All right, motion to adjourn.
I move to adjourn.
Okay, thank you all for hanging. Lot, a lot.
Not all.
Okay.
Good night.
Yeah.
Very well.